Sorry about my coffee and this like extra humidity and heat like really kicks in that. Yeah, and it gives me like that allergy tickle and I just can't make it stop and then I'm like, you've got it, it just doesn't go away. I'm not sick, that's not it, so sorry for coffee.
I sneezed all over the place.
Not for sniffles, there's a difference.
I know, I know I'm excited. I know, I was hoping. I was like, please don't, if it's ninety, we're just gonna go where it's the office. Yeah, no, it's supposed to be gorgeous. By the gazebo, right next to the gazebo.
All right, it is seven o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion by Councilmember Mock.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember Welsh. Can we please do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Councilmember Mock?
Aye.
Councilmember Sayer?
Aye.
Councilmember Pershman?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. All right, motion passes. I don't believe we have anything in here for community comment unless, Cherry, you wanna make some comments? Okay, all right, hard pass on the community comment. Can't even sell that if you need to. All right. Presentations and reports. We have a fun one tonight that I have been looking forward to. In looking forward to celebrating, not looking forward to. So tonight, we are here to celebrate Kathy Elke, who will be retiring in, what's the countdown now? Next Wednesday, so. Seven days. So the end is near and Kathy has just been a bright spot. And the staff, if you know Kathy, you know that if you come into the office on October thirty first, or really anytime in the month of December, or probably anytime close to the Fourth of July, she has at least a t-shirt, if not matching earrings, if not a full-blown outfit slash costume. And I think Kathy, I've always enjoyed like how this is hard work at the city level, but you always find a way to have fun, make it fun and not take yourself too seriously. So with that, I have a mayoral proclamation that I would like to read to you here for Kathy Elke Day. It says, whereas on May seventh twenty, uh, two thousand and seven, Mayor Wagon and Councilmembers Williamson, Peterson, Monroe and Webb were informed by the City Administrator Elmquist that Kathy Elke was selected to fill the role of City Bookkeeper position at City Hall. And whereas Kathy Elke has served four mayors and thirteen council members throughout her tenure as the accountant, and whereas Kathy Elke has faithfully and effectively processed well over one hundred thousand invoices, reconciled over four hundred bank statements, processed twelve thousand payroll checks, participated in seventeen annual audits, won sales tax audit, and created many, 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 many spreadsheets. And whereas Kathy Elke has successfully migrated the accounting system to a new software program, BSNA, and whereas Kathy has provided office support and served as an election judge through nine election cycles, and whereas Kathy Elke has never forgotten an employee birthday, has always gone out of her way say to say good morning and share a smile, has shared many delicious treats with her coworkers, has festively decorated and celebrated holidays, and is always up for planning a good party, and whereas throughout her hard, hard work, joyful spirit, Kathy Elke has earned a reputation from citizens, fellows, fellow employees, appointed officials and elected officials for being reliable, kind and cheerful. And whereas on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, Kathy notified staff of her intent to retire on July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, after seventeen years of dedicated and thoughtful service to the residents of Carver, I now therefore, Courtney Johnson, Mayor of the City of Carver, do hereby proclaim July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four as Kathy Elke Day and urge all the citizens of Carver to express their appreciation for Kathy's many years of service to the City of Carver. Kathy, thank you. All right, let's take some pictures. Oh yeah, why don't we do that first, sorry. Oh, here we go, come on. You gotta come on up though because Erica's participating remotely and he wants to hear what you're saying too. Yeah, make sure the green light is on. Okay. Are you crying? Stop.
I'm, of course I'm crying, I worked with Kathy.
Your crying makes me cry, it's the only thing that can make me cry.
I don't know if I'm gonna make it through this either, so I just wanna say how grateful I am for sharing the past seventeen years of my life with my coworkers and the people of the City of Carver. You have supported me through so much in my career and my personal life. I consider you all friends and a second family. Although I'm excited for my retirement, I'm a little sad to say goodbye. I'm gonna miss you all, but I will stop by from time to time, of course, for sure on Halloween and you may not, you may not recognize me, I might be in my witch costume. But thank you all.
Kathy, I had a grand plan that to celebrate your retirement, we would all come dressed in costumes. Unfortunately, not only did I not think of that in time, but I personally would have had to have borrowed a costume from you. But I thought that that would have been a really fitting way to pay tribute to you, so.
Thank you, thank you so much.
All right, we're gonna do something with just Kathy and then we'll add Terry and.
What do you want?
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Kathy, do you want to do something with Terry?
Oh yeah, sure.
I'm not. Bye Kathy.
Bye guys.
Thank you.
We don't see you before, we'll see you on Kathy Elke Day.
Yes.
So we get the day off?
Okay, let's see. Moving on, we have no public hearings tonight. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Sayer?
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember Welsh. Any further discussion?
I have one quick questions for the attorney. So with the new state law about the safe and sick earned time, I did see that it was in here, we're all covered on that. Okay, and that doesn't, it doesn't take away or replace the catastrophic sick bank, correct?
Correct, we're not making any changes to it. Vicky had that approved, I think, earlier in the year, so we're covered on all of that.
All good, that's all. All right, can I get a roll call vote, please, Vicky?
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Councilmember Mock?
Aye.
Councilmember Sayer?
Aye.
Councilmember Pershman?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Okay, we had one carryover item from our work session, which is the ten-year streets plan update. So Erin, I'll go back to you on that, please.
Yes. Okay, so we were on slide five. We talked about the existing plan components, the new plan components, so any additional discussion on this slide before we move into kind of the nuts and bolts of the ten-year plan?
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, so what I have here is we have a slide for each year, it just goes over what's included. You'll see some things have a red strike through. That's what, that's something that changed from the prior year, so that's how I represented that. And then just, you'll see in note six also that, just remember that all these costs, they include the thirty-five thousand in general maintenance. So you'll see the street maintenance fund, like on this slide, six oh two, nine sixty-one, that includes that thirty-five thousand. So I didn't list that every year, but it does include that, so. Again, I can move as slowly or as quickly as, as you all want, so just please tell me if you want me to speed up or whatnot, but I'll just kind of give a high-level overview for each planned year. So for starters, Sunny Ridge Drive, that one is falling apart and it needs to be replaced. That's a reclaim project, is planned for twenty twenty-five. And then we're starting to move into the Carver Bluffs neighborhood, starting next year. So you'll see some mill and overlays happening down in the Bluffs. And then some various seal coating on Ironwood Drive and the parking lot for Ironwood Park. And then some, just some other random fog sealing of trails. In the state aid streets fund, seal coating six streets, so that was a project that was done, it'll be three years ago already in twenty twenty-five, so we'll chip seal that, which is part of our, our planned goal of getting on our collector streets within the first three years to do the, the chip seal of those roadway surfaces. And then High Street and Kirchi, that was a carryover from a project that was done in twenty twenty. So it didn't quite meet the five-year, but that's, it's kind of a, a popular route that kind of goes between six and four, so. That's why that one is included in, in that route as well, and that is an MSAS route. And then fog sealing the trail on six streets, so that's kind of the twenty twenty-five year. Any questions? The, the one street, so Overlook Drive, that was moved, so from a cash flow perspective, we didn't, we wanted to try to stay positive. This first planned year, I think we were eight thousand dollars in the red, but that didn't concern Lynn, but then after that, we have a positive fund balance for the balance in the local fund, so. That all sound good?
Um, I guess, just a maybe general question. How, like you said, you know, we wanna keep a cat, positive cash balance. If we have an unexpected, you know, when a project comes in lower bid, you would obviously move those forward as, right, as future years, right, if we have a projected, the balance is higher than we had projected, right, we can obviously move them earlier, right?
Yeah, you're, yeah, again, so it's, it's like a bank account, so it can ebb and flow. It'll just be, you know, if there's a, if there's a shortfall in any given year, there would have to be some sort of a mechanism to cover that shortfall, and that's an accounting exercise, but I can't speak to that. But again, Lynn, Lynn's goal was, let's, let's maintain a positive fund balance. You know, like I said, this first year was a negative eight thousand dollar deficit projected, but after that, we're, we're looking to be positive, so. Okay, thank you. And then in the, in the state aid account, just, just so everybody knows, you can request advance funding. So we do show a couple of years where, where we are gonna be in the red, but you can request funding in advance, so basically you can, I think it's like three years worth of your allocation, so we have some flexibility to be able to do that, to, to capture those funds earlier. All right, twenty twenty-six, moving to Mount Hope Road, that's slated as a reclamation project, and then continuing on with the work down in the Carver Bluffs neighborhood. One of the items, Ramsey Avenue, it's highlighted here, that was moved to twenty twenty-seven. That one's already a reclaim, so we've already essentially lost the mill and overlay on that, so moving it back one year really doesn't do much, so it's still gonna be a reclaim.
Can I ask a quick question about that one?
Yes, sir.
So I drive that one every day, I drive it in pretty poor shape. Is there anything you'll do between now and twenty-seven, just a hot patch, what happens there?
Yeah, so Public Services Team, if they haven't already, they'll, they'll be going through shortly and just doing the, kind of the annual patching program. So that would be the, the means that that would be repaired for the next couple of years. If, if it starts to come apart more dramatically, we'd have to, to really take a look at it and see, you know, if it would have to be moved up for some reason, but there wouldn't be any like major, like thin overlay or something put on the road anticipated at this point.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question on that one also. We're looking at the roads up in the Bluffs and we chose to do Ridge Crest over Ramsey. Is one of those more highly traveled than the other? I'm just, they're look fairly similar in length, so I was just curious why we went with one over the other. One has a much higher volume of traffic on it that we need to do at first.
Yeah, so we thought we'd defer Ramsey an additional year, just because we're kind of like working our way out, so you'd be running truck traffic on, say we did Ramsey first and deferred Ridge Crest, then you'd basically be running trucks on, on the brand-new pavement at, so. Try to avoid that one you can, so you kind of work from outs, inside out in neighborhoods if, if you can do it, so. That's, that was the philosophy on that one.
Okay, thanks.
The Kasaf Forty Turnback Project, so this is one that we've had some, you know, high-level discussions on. In last year's plan, it was, it was projected that we could do this in twenty twenty-five, hoping that we'd hit some funding pursuits. So unfortunately, LRIP was unsuccessful this year. So that was a one and a half million dollar funding pursuit that we were hoping to get. And then we also provide, or applied for some grant funding through the Met Council for the trail system. That was also unsuccessful, so currently, we're, we're really in the funding exercise at this point. Trying to organize that, gear up for some additional funding in the next cycle, and then really see where, where we could go with it from there. But it's not in this plan, it's not represented in any of the cash flow that, that you saw in the packet, so it's all an outside funding exercise.
Erin, is LRIP an annual opportunity for grants?
It's, it's not a given, but it depends on if they, if they fund that program.
Okay.
So like traditionally, the last couple of times, it's been in there, but it's not a given that it will be in the next round.
Got it. And are we at the ready to apply for it anytime that grant cycle opens up?
Yeah, so now that it's, we've made that application, like it's the same application pretty much year over year, so it's a pretty easy turn.
Copy paste.
Yeah.
So if, when we got that funding, we could, again, shovel the deck chairs and make this work to go in, wherever, knowing that it would very likely postpone twenty twenty-six's plan a year or however, whenever that would come.
Yeah, and if you wanted to use the, the funding within, you know, the pavement management plan, if it, if, say you're gonna go bond, so you're gonna take out a million and a half dollar bond to pay for the, the gap, then you could really do it whenever, so it depends on the funding sources you're gonna use.
I have a question too on this one. So we always see this one together, obviously, Kasaf Forty is one road, part of this, the one that's on the corner there by Getaway and Lisa's Place, that's on Main Street. But, you know, when we look at these, is there a way to do these as separate projects? Because the one that's by Casey's, I am completely sold on. I think it looks fantastic. It's gonna be a great way to move traffic in that area. There's nothing about the, that other one that I'm sold on when it comes to a one-way and all those changes. Is there, is it all or nothing when we're applying for this grants to go with, or is it something where we could do one section at a time?
No, so that's a really good point. So for example, twenty twenty-six, we're planning to do Mount Hope Road. So if council decides, all right, let's, let's go ahead and get that intersection done as part of this and, and get the balance of Old Carver Road repaved going out of town to, to sixty-one. You know, we could do that now. We, we do have one point one million dollars in turnback funds that, you know, we could, we could harness that funding immediately should the council say, yes, we wanna do this. So we were just kind of, we were trying to think of this corridor holistically, just, you know, from a corridor planning perspective, but if there are certain areas you wanna try to tackle sooner, that's.
While you're coughing, can I ask you a tag-on question? If we start piecemealing this up, does that make our grant application less viable, less seductive? Whatever the word is, wanting to have the state throw us money.
That's the other piece of it too, is, you know, we thought we had a pretty good application for LRIP again, just because these are, you know, core rehabilitation, you know, intersection improvements, that kind of stuff, so. I think there's probably something to be said about that too, so. You know, maybe we could try to go for one more round and see what happens. And if it doesn't happen next time, you know, we're, sooner or later, we're gonna have to do something on Old Carver Road just because it's not gonna last forever, so. That's, but that's for your, you know, I need your direction on that, so.
But this four million, sorry, this four million dollars is just these three elements here. It's not a re, like a mill and overlay of Old Carver Road, is it?
It didn't, so the four million dollars included a full-dropped reclamation on Old Carver Road. It included both these intersections and it included the trail going out of town towards JCP.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Brent, go ahead, you've been kind of.
Just one of the things that we, to Erin's comment before, we kind of tentatively planned for this to be kind of an inside-out as well, just thinking of the significant truck traffic related to not only the Miriam Junction Trail project, but also our certified levy project. And so there's already gonna be a lot of construction, but would you figure that traffic, you know, we'd take the grant funds if we got them, but part of this will be, we'll have to bond for it, or at least that's what our financial plan calls for. But then you might wanna consider like, if the loan proceeds, not loan, grant proceeds coming for fortunate enough to get that, that'll dictate it, but without that, it might be a challenge to try to do that before or during those major infrastructure projects.
That's a good point, because also that's gonna be a lot of heavy equipment running down Old Carver Road, right there. And then putting in that brand-new intersection as, I mean, they should be coming up, but yeah, things happen, right? And I would hate to see us put that in and have it, have something happen right away. I do think Old Carver Road needs some help, even this year, whatever, with the patching or whatever. We were out on the motorcycle this weekend and there's some pretty big dividends in there, it was a little, so.
I appreciate the strategy of wanting to go in, outside in, whatever you guys called it. But I still think we should be putting in every opportunity we have for LRIP and hopefully have a tough decision to make.
And that, that would be our intent.
Okay, super.
On that, I'm gonna have one more flipside question. On, if we're doing Mount Hope, do we get, is it more cost-effective though if we were to do that intersection piece along with it? And maybe not do all of Carver Road out, because they shouldn't, they should be coming through, are they coming through the parking lot at Depot to get onto the trail?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I'm just, there's a lot of pains to the construction, so, but also I think that's a, a great new feature that's gonna be added for our drivers, so I don't know. Is it, is there something cost-effective by doing that along with Mount Hope?
Yeah, you won't have to redo anything, so you're gonna be saving the pavement costs, you know, you won't double up on that, so.
The only thing you would wanna consider is you'd have to bond for it, because we wouldn't have state aid funds to pay for that. We, we could use part of the turnback funds, I don't know if that would be enough to cover it or not.
Maybe, yeah.
Right now, our, our impetus has been, whenever we get the trail funding is when we, or not trail, but the LRIP funding is when we would push the button. But if you, this is good conversation, if you want that to be a little bit more pliable, we can do that too.
Seems wasteful to reclaim, redo the whole road and then chop up the road we just did.
Yes, but with LRIP grant, we'd have one and a half million reasons to.
Yeah, exactly.
If we could, that's an if, right?
Yeah.
Because what is our, is the, the county turnback funds, one point one, okay. So that would or would not be enough for that intersection if we were doing Mount Hope? Is that what the, we were saying, is that the age we were coming from?
Yeah, we could do that intersection for one point one million dollars.
But then also it reduces our chances of getting LRIP if you strip that portion out of the grant application.
That's already.
I would say so.
You would think it would?
I think, I think so, because we, I mean, that was one of the big.
That's a safe.
Pieces that, that we were highlighting in the application, so.
Eric has his hand raised. Oh, go ahead, Eric, sorry.
Yeah, just a quick question. Do we get feedback why our petition for LRIP was unsuccessful? So we can make adjustments in the next submission?
I don't believe we.
We don't, they had a record number of applications, limited, a finite amount of funding. I think this armchair quarterback analysis, we just got funded like a year or two previous, so I think it, from that standpoint, it gets harder to fund a city two out of three years, but maybe there's other cities that have been trying to get their own version of County Road Forty funded, but.
Okay. Just wanted to know, we got any feedback? Thank you.
Yeah.
I would like to see, I can see both sides of this argument. I would like to see us go through at least one more grant cycle, if not a couple more, to see if we can get that grant money for LRIP and leave that project intact.
Okay, so just so that, I'm gonna kind of repeat it back, just to make sure I have everything correct. So if we were to do this outside of that, using, outside of any grant and using the turnback money, we would be putting ourselves in jeopardy of getting the full grant amount that we're requesting because we would be taking out safety-ish, safety enhancements?
It was one of the, yeah, it's an intersection improvement.
Okay.
Yeah, so if that's an item that is no longer being, you know, portrayed in the application, then it's one less reason that they wanna, you know, fund it possibly, so. I'm just speculating, but I think it was a, a big highlight that we.
You feel that was a big highlight in the.
Yeah, I mean, both of the intersections were highlighted very heavily in the application, so. Yeah.
I'm good, thank you.
Um, okay.
Okay.
What year are we on now?
Twenty twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Oh, only twenty-seven.
Okay, so twenty twenty-seven, we're continuing to work in the Bluffs, we're finishing up that neighborhood in twenty twenty-seven. And then we're starting to switch gears and move out to the Spring Creek Drive area, so kind of the older piece of Spring Creek Drive, and those connected streets are mill and overlays. So that would be happening in twenty twenty-seven. And then, you know, a chip seal on Four Street, which is planned to be done this year. Twenty twenty-eight, oh, I'm sorry, I missed. Twenty twenty eight, oh, I'm sorry, I misspoke. We were, the Spring Creek Drive stuff was supposed to be in twenty twenty seven. It got deferred to twenty twenty eight. So as you see here, those are in here. Um, a couple other streets in in the area for Mill and Overlay, Lorraine Court, Vernon Drive. And then the next piece of Monroe Drive would be a a chip seal. Twenty twenty nine, we sealed coating Mount Hope Road, which is planned to be done in twenty twenty six. And then continuing on those in the neighborhood streets, East of Jonathan Carver Parkway and the Mill and Overlay program. Twenty thirty.
Can you go back to that other side?
Yeah, yep.
Is that Aspen Drive part of the, a different like association or that's more the trails?
That that is a public street, the the orange streets to the south are all private.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Twenty thirty, um, again, the expectation that we'd be doing something on Old Carver Road, so that that's shown to have a seal coat then in twenty thirty. And then rehabbing that Broadway North piece, whatever that ends up looking like. You know, that that was an old county road, so we might not be able, might not have to build it as robustly and as wide and everything, but at some point, that's gonna have to get addressed. So it's planned for twenty thirty.
Question on on that.
Go ahead.
Um, so I I happen to walk along that road fairly often, just coming down, cuz there's a trail right in getting into downtown. Um, would this be the part of the plan where if we wanted to add some trail access, we'd need to put it in this? In this plan or is that separate? Like, uh, you know, when we reclaim the street, right, maybe add in more access between, right? There's the other trail that comes down from, from.
From the north?
From the north there, right? And like, they're just kind of like halfway in this, right, where it turns into the old. I mean, it's very low traffic, so I mean, it's not.
When you say trail access, can you say more?
Just like a, like a trail, like more like a walking trail or sidewalk or something, right? Right now, we just walk on the street, cuz there's like three cars that drive by ever, right? Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you mean, it's not like a huge, but it is like, is this where we would put something like that in our plan?
Uh, defer to, Aaron, I think, we looked at that five or six years ago and the width doesn't support two lanes of traffic.
With the trail, okay.
So you'd have to widen the road, which is in some places, you just, there's not enough real estate.
Okay.
But, Aaron, I don't know if you have an opinion on that or?
I I'd echo that, Brent, that west side does get pretty steep, but I I guess I haven't really looked at it.
No, that's okay.
So.
And the low traffic on that road, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, without, I get why you're asking, but I think.
Okay. Or as we designed the new road, I don't know, some some other options that.
To that point, like I said, this is, it's a county road section right now, so, you know, maybe we could get a little bit creative in how we redid that in the future. Again, I just haven't.
Okay, now that's, yeah, it's.
Too much.
Six years out, so, okay. That was it.
All right, twenty thirty one, Levi Griffin Road, that would be a Mill and Overlay candidate at twenty years old and that piece of DeWalter Road. Um, then following up, um, starting to get, you know, we're in the back end of the plan now, so, you know, just starting to get the the funds put into the plan. So moving back into downtown and we'll be working on some of those streets kind of in the back half of this, of this plan, is what's shown here, so you'll see that here in in twenty thirty one, uh, twenty thirty two. Uh, again, hitting the downtown streets. Um, and then twenty thirty three, um, we have a Mill and Overlay planned for Main Street West. So that's what, nine years out from now is when the first real rehab would be happening. I do have a chip seal. Um, we had a chip seal planned with those twenty twenty six improvements to this piece of Main Street West, just to seal that up for another, you know, seven, eight years, so we can make it last. But then this would be the, you know, Mill and Overlay on Main Street West. Um, and then there's one piece of Carver Bluffs Parkway that was Mill and overlaid probably, I don't know, seven or eight years ago. So you'll see here, that'd be a thirty-nine-year-old road at that point. So that would be time we're thinking for probably more vigorous maintenance in the form of a reclaimed project. Um, we did have, um, starting to move into Copper Hills neighborhood, the first phase of that in twenty thirty three last year. And we're pushing that into twenty thirty four, so the last year of the program as we see here, so. Um, with that, that's kind of the outlay of the plan. I had the cash flow summary for both the local fund and the state aid fund. As you can see here, twenty twenty five, we would have a negative fund balance by eight thousand dollars projected, but then, um, having a positive fund balance thereafter. Um, you can see the additional allocation, so, um, something we were talking about, you know, with the park fund. So we'd be, we started at, I think, three twenty was the first year of the plan. And then we went to four twenty, now five twenty, six twenty, seven twenty. And then what we have here represented is holding at seven seventy. Um, so that would be another thing that council would have to consider is whether or not you wanna start having a little bit more of a cushion in your fund, um, for the future, that you could possibly pay for some, some, you know, one-off issues that would arise. But right now, we are showing, you know, a positive fund balance with with capping it at that seven seventy. So you'd have to provide direction whether or not you wanna increase that fund balance over time. And we'd have to look at that within the whole, you know, long-term plan. Um, the MSA accounts, like I said, there's two negative years, but we can request advance funding on those projects, so. Um, I won't go through the maps, but I included them in the packet just for your use. And with that, I will pause for questions.
Any additional questions? We kinda went through as we were doing it.
Um.
Go ahead, Brent.
I guess, uh, like you said, on the, on the twenty thirty three, when we were reclaiming the Carver Bluff Parkway, right? That's, we did the Mill and Overlay, you know, as X number of years ago, right? That's the whole point, is to get that road to last longer, so that we didn't have to do the reclaim, you know, whatever, five years ago or four years ago, whatever, right?
Ex- exactly, that's that's a prime example. I think that road was Mill and overlaid in like twenty fifteen, I'll say.
Okay.
Um, I wa- I wasn't part of that program at the time, but it was somewhere around then. So you can see you got another eighteen years out of that road before you had to do that reclaim, is what we're projecting, so.
Yeah, and then on the, on the balance, right, as we increase the fund balance and are able to get ahead of, like you say, get ahead of that, right? That helps us keep that allocation static, right? Cuz we're not doing as many of the expensive reclaims, right? We can do the overlays and keep the, like you said, keep the cost more predictable.
Mm-hmm, yeah, you can see a lot of the the projects on the back end of the plan are those Mill and overlays. So to me, that that means we're getting to be in a good place where.
Yeah, not a lot of.
We're kinda on, you know, cruise control, obviously, we have a ten-year window here, but it it doesn't seem like we're gonna have something that's gonna get out of hand really quickly based on how I'm seeing it come together here, so that's good.
Yeah, that's.
Christian?
Mm-mm.
Eric? Nothing from Eric?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Lori?
No questions.
Okay, um, I think this is great. Can we make sure that if this is now our new, like, if this is the plan, let's make sure that this gets updated on the website, so that there aren't just different versions of it hanging out there?
Well, this won't get adopted until you update your long-term plan later on this fall, these are all drafts.
So as soon as that happens. Okay, fine, I just know that whenever somebody comes and says, I live off of Elm Street, when's it happening? It, ooh, I thought it was sooner than that, so.
Cuz there.
Good point.
There might be, I mean, when you, you know, you're gonna see the infrastructure plan, the building and facilities plan. I think there might be another one in there, but you're gonna see all that in.
Okay.
Um, I'm missing the word, but in totality, you might wanna adjust a couple of things too. And so, um, we'll put it out there, and we can put it out there like a draft, but i- and if you want it faster, we can do that, but that's been, that's my hesitancy, is if you put it out there, then you change it, then people might get upset.
More confusion?
I'm fine with not putting it out there until it's completely, yeah, completely finalized. Um, I will remember that we were somewhere in July when we went through this and could kinda go through and back and reference it when those folks off Elm Street call. Um, so that's, thank you. Um, my only other comment was, I just, I think this is great. This is something that we do have worked really, really hard on and it, until, you know, recently wasn't even ten years, it wasn't as robust as it is, as it is. And the way that you're able to kind of just move things around and make it fit with the, our budget parameters, quite honestly, gives me a little bit of a headache, but you appear to do it with such ease, so thank you so much, very well done.
Thank you, yep.
Great, um, that was it, let's go around and let's do communications. Eric, do you wanna go first? First of all, we've gotta know, did anybody? Did anybody come to your mother-in-law's house tonight to participate?
Really disappointed they didn't.
Okay, I knew.
No one flew out.
Anticipated you would be, all right. Lori?
I don't have anything.
Christy?
Uh, we did not have an HPC meeting this month. Um, I did have a question, I know we sent out earlier in the spring the letter to all of the historic district, um, homes and businesses. Would maybe send out another one since we're halfway through? I'm, I guess maybe it's cuz I'm a little bit surprised that we're this far into the summer and we haven't really seen a whole lot of construction projects happening. So I'm wondering if a reminder that things need to come to the HPC might be a good idea?
Are you asking my opinion or are you what, are you telling me?
And does it takes, if we, can we send out another round of letters to the historic? Like, is it a big deal to have, I mean, does it, a ton of staff time, is it something you can pretty easily put in the mail?
What if we did a social media post? Cuz just judging from paper costs and mailing for something that we've already done.
That's fine.
Your publication's perspective more isn't necessarily better.
Okay, would you have any room in the next newsletter for even a tiny little blurb? Think about it.
Oh, for me?
Yeah, yeah, in the next newsletter that goes out. Not a big thing, but just a little, hey, don't forget if you've got.
Yeah.
Construction projects in the historic district.
Okay.
I mean, the, I don't know how, I think there's like maybe eighty to ninety properties, so I mean, it's, I'm trying not to like say it's easy to do, cuz I'm not stuffing them.
It's not that tenuous, though.
But, you know, it's just a matter of, you know, I don't know if it was that long ago that we sent it out, it might have been like less than three months ago.
Yeah, but our seasons are short for a lot of construction, for those kind of homes.
Uh, we'll do, we'll do whatever the council asks us to do.
Um, if if Courtney is able to put a sentence or two in her newsletter and we can do maybe a little Facebook blast, I would be happy with that.
Sure. Okay, we can do at least half of that.
Okay, wait a minute, then I'm gonna make, no, all right, that's fine, thank you.
Brent?
Um, just, we had a county parks commission meeting last Wednesday. Uh, part of the, uh, meeting was we did a tour, the parks commissioner did a tour of the, uh, Miriam Junction Trail, and they had some people from Scott County come out and give an update. Um, I had already heard it from the city council respective, but some of the other park commissioners hadn't. So they think they're still on track to have the bidding, they're out for bidding right now currently, and they expect to get the bids back for the main section of the bridge sometime in late July, August. Hopefully, they'll have a better, uh, construction timeline once that comes back. And then, um, again, also the parks just going over the budget. Uh, again, with the legislature not passing a bonding bill is disappointing on the projects that they're able to tackle, so we've had to scale that back a bit back from the parks. And then, uh, we have a, uh, planning cushion for City of Carver coming up on Thursday, and that's all I have.
All right, Courtney, I forgot one really quick thing.
Go.
So we had the teddy bear band down at Gazebo Park, and no, there was one of the park and rec things that was scheduled, and it was so well attended, I was working from home that day, so I got to look out the window and there were so many kids running around and having a great time. It was a little bit harder to concentrate with the, with the music, but no, it was, it was really neat, it went over very well. Um, I think that if we continue to do those, that should definitely be one that we do every summer down there, so it was really well attended.
Good. Um, thanks for that update, not the one I expected from you. Um, let's see, for me, last week, last Wednesday, um, Brent and I met with Dr. Erin Rathke, the new superintendent for the Eastern Carver County School District. Um, she is no stranger to either one of us, because she had previously served as the assistant superintendent, but good to sit with her as she was, what, less than two dozen, less than a dozen days into her administration? So really exciting that she stopped in Carver, um, and just kind of talking about our continued partnership and our community leaders meetings and how those might evolve and what those might continue to look like. Um, also volunteered last Saturday at the Carver Ridge Family Fun Fair, which I'm sure you saw, they had a dunk tank.
Were you in the dunk tank?
I was not, but I was staffing the dunk tank, so I was handing out the balls and collecting the money for folks who, um, I dodged that bullet.
Dodged the ball?
Um, yeah, dodged the seat, the dunk tank. Um, and then the only other thing that I wanna mention, mostly because I keep seeing it out of my peripheral vision and thinks it looks like a person, but is, um, the City of Carver is partnering with the Southwest Metro Chamber on Christmas in July, which is what that Christmas tree is very unseasonably in our city hall. And, um, I feel like I know enough about this to be dangerous, so Brent, correct me if I'm wrong, but the idea is they have partnered with a number of nonprofits in our community and they all have wish lists. So the idea is to purchase a gift card, a gas gift card, a Target gift card, a Walgreens gift card. Um, and they can provide some direction as to who needs what and who can use what. Um, and then you put it in there, then they'll come collect it and it'll go to all of the nonprofits and all of their deserving clients. Am I halfway close to what that is?
Is this adult center then? Like when you're talking about gift cards, is it adults?
Yes, so for their adult clients, versus like a holiday where you'd be purchasing toys or toys for tots. I think this is more just, um, to support those nonprofits in their needs.
Gotcha.
So I would imagine, you know, maybe the nonprofit needs the Target gift cards, maybe they turn around and give them to their clients. Gas, gas cards, certainly. Um, that is all that I had, so that I would entertain.
Brent?
Oh, I'm sorry, Brent.
Just one follow-up on the mayor's comments about Dr. Rathke, we did, uh, and she offered to come out and meet the council and kinda give you, the council, an overview of, uh, her work plan. She talked about like her first one hundred days and she's meeting with community groups, doing like a series of questions. So she was gonna check her calendar and find a date that she could meet with the council during a work session.
There's a really mindful process when they did the superintendent search and they really engaged bunches of different constituencies, local elected leaders, community members, parents. Like, the data was cut a bunch of different ways and she said, no, what I heard loud and clear was this, this community wants to see me, they wanna see me out and about, so she's doing it. And that is kind of one of the tactics that she's using to get out there and do things. She was also in the dunk tank at the Fire and Ice on Saturday, so, um, good for her, better for her. All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
A motion by Councilmember Welch.
I'll second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mock. Thank you, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Councilmember Mock?
Aye.
Councilmember Sayer?
Aye.
Councilmember Pershman?
Aye.
Leah Johnson?
Aye, motion carries, we are adjourned, good evening.